Well, good evening, everyone, if you joined us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everyone, for attending the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 29th, 2019. Here tonight, besides myself, is Sharon and Mary, and we have plenty to talk about, so we're going to get right to it. Have all present board members seen the orders?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments, questions on that? Approval of Select Board Minutes of October the 15th?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Mary. For discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Got a card here on my desk, says, "Thank you for your annual contribution," from Ark, Ross Elmo, Executive Director. Must have been our appropriation from March, right?
Yep.
All right, very nice.
That's the minutes.
Thank you. Questions from the floor, public comment, anyone who wishes to speak, who is not on the agenda. Jim, are you here about Campbell Road? Okay, we'll get to that in a moment, if you're okay with that. We have representation from Green Lantern Solar here. If the board is okay with it, I'd go right to that first. How are you, sir?
Good, thanks.
Do you want to come up to the table, so the microphone can pick you up?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
So, just today, we received the agreement between the town and Green Lantern from the town's attorney. Kevin say anything to you, Bill?
No, he had proposed changes, sent it to their attorney, and didn't get any feedback, so he was, assumed they were good with it.
Were you aware of that?
I knew that it had been sent, but I haven't actually seen the notes or the changes that were made. I think one of the changes simply had to do with the starting date and the ending date, but I just didn't manage to pick it up today.
Okay, just to be clear, this is the option for the lease agreement, it's not the whole lease agreement, so, right?
That's exactly right, absolutely not. It's just a...
It's a placeholder.
It's a placeholder to allow us to begin the work of evaluating the feasibility, and it's almost identical to lease option agreements we've used many, many times before.
So, is it fair to say, Mary and Sharon, that since we're short two members, and we just received this today, that we would table this for two weeks and review it?
Yeah, I move to table.
Motion to table, Mary?
That's fine, but if we have time for an Energy Committee, and JP is Chair of our Energy Committee, so we should really try and get it to him.
So, we should amend your motion to send it to the Energy Committee?
Sorry to do this, but we'll move.
So, we'll...
No move.
Okay. So, we'll send this to the Energy Committee and get a meeting scheduled, we'll try our best before the next Select Board Meeting of November the 12th.
Okay.
Fair enough?
And I'd like to see it, too, because I think that there are probably a few not-that-dramatic changes, but I'd like to see it as well, and so, that'll be great.
Very good. Anything further for Ralph? Mary?
Uh, no, thank you.
Karen? Ralph, anything for us?
Uh, no, thanks, although there was also, you had me down under D as well, I wondered if that was something separate.
No, no, this place.
Okay.
We just didn't want to forget you.
Yeah, we handled A and D in one swipe here.
I got two for the price of one.
That's right.
Very good.
All right, thank you very much.
Ralph, thanks, we'll be in touch, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Items, we will have an abbreviated meeting tonight, one board member has to leave within the hour, so I want to get to any items that will require a vote, especially with only three of us here, for us to entertain. We received, once again, only one bid, only one bid for the renovation of the Town Clerk and Treasurer's Office. This time, we advertised it. Additionally, we had directly solicited local contractors to give us bids. A couple called or stopped by for a walk-through. Once again, we only received one bid from KB Builders of Kyle Bedard. This was in the amount of, there was two prices here, and it looks like the board would have to decide. The first price is $36,330.50, and that would price with finished hardwood, replacing two-by-two ceiling tiles to match, and salvaging all trim. Or if, for the price of $39,117.50, the price with new carpet, new two-by-four ceiling tiles, and all-new trim. So, I don't know which way the price with new carpet, price with finished hardwood, I don't know which way, do you remember when you were on the Building Committee, you talked about carpet or hardwood in there?
We were going to see, in fact, we tore up a corner to see if there was hardwood under there, and we're going to see if it was worth salvaging.
In detail, it says there, in the, I think it's first page, talks about if it's not feasible, then you go with carpet, it's built into there.
Okay.
And then the other part is the ceiling tiles, are they talking about the tin tiles or the drop ceiling tiles? Right, so, because we had, did we say anything about the... Did our specs include anything to do with the old tiles? Yeah, the original tiles?
We were going to change them to match, and we could pay the option to go with two-by-two or two-by-four, so.
And completion date was...
About to work.
To stay out of your elections.
As close to the election as possible, basically.
To stay out of the elections.
So, I had a conversation with this builder, and I told him that our expectations were as close to the New Year as possible, so...
That would be preferable.
One of you is shaking your head yes, the other one shaking your head no.
It's fine, I agree.
Oh, okay. Wondering what's going on there?
My office isn't getting hard parts, okay.
He doesn't care.
Okay. So, the, you know, we certainly, I think, did our due diligence trying to solicit bids for this. We, you know, rejected the first round and received only one again, and, you know, this is a project we want to get completed, so...
All right, I move, we, actually, I would move we accept the higher bid at $39,117.50, because if we don't have that hardwood under there, we're going to need new carpeting in there.
Okay, so, Mary's motion is to accept this bid for $39,117.50?
I second it.
Seconded by Sharon. For discussion, all those in favor?
Bill had his...
At one point, there's another paper there that Bill had brought in, separate from the marble company for cutting the marble for the counter, that will need to be included, because the contractor will, he'll install it, but he's not going to cut it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so, we can, we could actually handle that probably as a separate.
I think so.
It's fine, but that is a necessary part of it.
Okay.
Okay. So, this would be $39,117.50, that's with KB Builders. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And the second piece of this, to put on the facia of the counters, is the marble from the previous central fire station, and to cut that to size is $595 from Galway Marble and Granite.
Move we approve?
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sharon, for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, that's a, add those two together for a total cost, $39... Plus...
$39.7.
I'm sorry, I just hit the wrong button. Bill, would you contact these folks? Just to review with the board, the payment schedule with them is the first payment of 40% at the start of construction, second payment of 30%, due upon completion of drywall, and the final payment at the completion of the entire project. Everyone good with that?
Sure.
Okay. Put these two things together for you, Bill.
That's a reminder, the circle ladies want new staplers and tape dispensers, just, yeah.
My staple is going bad, so... Okay, that was the remodel. If we go to C, Board Review and Discuss Heat Pump Proposals, is that from...
In your packet.
The 3, 4A, 4B, and 4C, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, and these heat pumps are for where, exactly?
Uh, one, a two-head system for here, and one for the transfer station. The one under number four for 4A is Bill Lozen.
Yep.
Can we take out $9,900 without the fire station included, same total, just include it all through building, so...
So, $6,650, I see, does that sound right to you?
Uh, that's for Town Hall, and then $3250 for the transfer station, plus $3250, so, $9,900 total.
So, $9,900 total, and how much back are we getting in rebates?
Uh, they include rebates in the cost, we're getting an additional $4,500 in contribution from Efficiency Vermont.
So, really, this project would be close to 15 grand?
Yeah.
No, no, $9,900, well, if you take $4,500 off of the total, we're getting back from Efficiency Vermont.
So, $9,900 minus $4,500, okay, that sounds better. And...
Are you sh... Not included?
There are rebates from Efficiency Vermont.
Yeah, no, I know that, I'm reading this.
Yeah, Brad also has local money that he can contribute toward the projects.
All right, are we, I just want to make sure we're comparing apples and apples here.
So, $9,900 for Bill Lozen, $7,800, so we have to add these two again for GEE?
Yes, those are, because they build them out separately.
So, $7,800 plus $3,100, so that's $10,900.
The last one, Pocket Plumbing, there is a notable difference, is they would require us to do the electrical work ourselves, they don't have electrician to do the work included. The other two, too.
So, once again, I'm adding both pages of Pocket together?
Correct.
$34,750, so that's 10. So, if you're following along with me, I have a total of Bill Lozen at $9,900, GEE, Green Earth Energy of Brandon at $10,900, and Pocket Plumbing at $10,934.12, less or plus an electrician. So, the low bid is Bill Lozen.
So, I move that we accept him.
Motion by, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Sharon to go with Bill Lozen at $9,900.
And mine is based on the fact that I have, I know some of the work that he's done, and it's been good.
Great. Mary? Seconding that motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. For discussion?
Yeah, I was just trying to, well, either way, even if... No, that includes the, okay, yeah, Lozen's still lower.
Got it.
And Bill, what's the timeline for, do we know?
We don't know.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
We'll have to...
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Just to add to that, Josh, not, I don't know him personally, I just know of his work.
Sure. Thanks, Sharon. All right, so, we're going to go with Bill Lozen on that. So, that handles A, C, D, and E on this updated agenda. Order to discuss road conditions on Campbell Road. Byron, would you come up to the table for this discussion, Campbell Road? And then, Jim, did you have anything you wanted to share about Campbell Road? You can come up as well, if you would.
So, Byron, I'd just ask if you could tell us sort of the unique relationship we have with the city on this section of Campbell Road, and a year or two ago, we had negotiated paving of this section of Campbell Road, and by a...
We thought we had.
We thought we had, but then by a lack of votes on the town side, we did not complete the negotiated project.
Yeah, I think there was apparently some misunderstanding or something between the two parties.
Okay.
So, it didn't get accomplished.
I also thought the city rejected when we made a pretty fair proposal to them, so I don't think it was lack of numbers on the board, but why don't we update from there, anyway?
Uh, anyways, so, I just, I did put together a quick little map tonight. Campbell Road in its entire length is 1.43 miles long. Now, that would be from the old Campbell Road, which started at Barrett Hill, down by Chris and Karen Heald's driveway, and extends all easterly all the way to the Creek Road. Roughly sometime after 2000, there's a section of that Campbell Road from Cortlande Road back to Barrett Hill that was in very poor condition, and quite frankly, I understand why the city probably didn't do a lot of maintenance there, because they didn't have any taxpayers out there at the time. So, anyways, some talks were underway down at my level with the city DPW, and we were talking about some type of a relation, getting together to do some construction there, and I don't know what happened, but anyways, the board chairman from the Select Board at that time said, "Why don't we just take over that section of the road?" So, that went to the legislature, because it's, there's no actual deeding that was done there, the city's charter was amended, and the city line was moved from one side of the road to the other side of the road, and that part of Campbell Road from Barrett Hill all the way to Cortlande Road became the town's.
For the record, that was not this chairman, that was a previous chairman.
Several previous chairmen.
Correct.
So, anyways, that section was roughly 2,240 feet or so, which is about .42 miles. So, if you add, if you take half of the 1.4, and that gives you about .71 miles of road, that would be split equally between the two municipalities, you could add, you would have to add another .29 miles to our mileage to make it a 50-50 split on that. Now, that's similar to what we have with the town amended, involved with Metal Lake Drive and Town Line Road, except the difference there is those, the town lines are essentially in the, within the pavement of the road. I won't say it's 100% half of the road, but it's pretty close. Campbell Road, on the other hand, lies wholly within the city and not, not split by the town lines. The Orange Book that we refer to, kind of the bible that we adhere to, it's put out by V-Trans, it's available online, it's called The Orange Book. In it, there is a section on highways that abut two municipalities, and municipalities are encouraged at that point to work out some type of maintenance agreements. So, I don't know where you want to go with this. Like I say, if you add .29 miles to the existing Campbell Road that we already have, that would essentially give us half of the entire Campbell Road. That would be a section from Cortlande Road around the corner to approximately Mike Zikreski's driveway, I don't know if anybody knows Mike or not, but he owns what was formerly called the old Hayward Orchard.
Byron, you may have said it in the beginning, and I apologize if I missed it, but the actual section, and then I want to go to you, Jim, for some comments from the public, but the actual section here that's in disarray and needs pavement as soon as possible is how long of a section?
That's from Cortlande Road to, it's like 5,000 feet, from Cortlande Road easterly to Creek Road.
So, it's almost a mile.
There is a section of that that the city had done an overlay on a number of years ago, starting at Creek Road and coming up around the corner, almost to Bendigs, maybe? Am I about right?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So, there's a smaller section there that has had no treatment at all that I can remember in over 20 years.
So, this popped up on our agenda tonight because of a couple, what I consider coincidences, thank you. Jim is here tonight because he sent me a passionate email about having the town and city figure out a way to get this paved, and I also learned last week that at the Board of Aldermen meeting, that Bill Gillum, one of the Aldermen, made a motion that he would like to see the intermunicipal committee of the Board of Aldermen reach out to the Town of Rutland's intermunicipal committee to see if there's any common projects that the two municipalities could partner on, and see if there's, you know, you know, growth through cooperation on certain projects that we could do together, and between Jim's email and Bill making that motion at the Board of Aldermen meeting, it made sense to me that, hey, maybe this is a low-hanging fruit here that we could work together as two communities to try to solve, because, you know, it is a shame that the road is in the condition it is, so...
Karen or Mary, anything for Byron, before I ask?
No, let's go on to Jim.
Jim, go ahead.
That certainly would be a welcome move, the only problem is that I think cold weather is going to catch up with us before anything materializes from a meeting that isn't even scheduled yet.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a springtime project, at the very least, right, Byron? If it was something that we were going to do?
Yeah, like maybe next budget project.
Next summer sometime.
Because we haven't budgeted for it this year.
I haven't budgeted anything, I'd have to redo and rework my budget just a little bit to accommodate that.
Okay.
In our previous, and I'll like, get back to you, Jim, but our previous proposal to the city, if I recall, was that we were going to bid that project at our lower cost, because they were locked into a three-year deal with Wilk at the time.
Right.
We were going to bid it, we got it for much less, and then the city would pay at our discounted rate.
Right.
The city didn't accept that proposal from us at the time.
No, the city wanted us, I think, to pay half.
Right, which was around, was around 13,000 or 14,000, if I remember?
Right.
But I thought, well, what I thought was...
I think we disagreed on that.
We weren't going to pay quite half.
Maybe it wasn't quite half, right.
Because they had some other funds that were dedicated for paving because of a water project.
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Jim.
So, things are so bad from Cortlande Road until you got pretty well down to where Bob Solari's property, the Bob Solari property, you all know where that is. I believe personally that it's beyond patching even. I don't think there's anything left to hold the patch.
Yes, that...
Byron can probably be more accurate about it than myself, but having been exposed to this business for a number of years, I think the real solution for the fall and the winter to get us to spring would be to go in there and just dig it up down to the gravel surface and try to get through the winter that way.
Well, that creates a whole different...
Oh, yeah.
...level of winter maintenance, because then you've got a gravel road that you've got a sand instead of salting, and that's the section that the city does maintain in the wintertime, and I don't think they're geared up for sanding.
Well, we certainly didn't ask them to be putting this fix either, so... I don't see any other way out for that portion. The rest of it can be patched, but in the spring, if paving isn't done, there's some cracks down through there that are going to have to be addressed, and there's also a few potholes showing, and some issues where the layers of pavement are separating. I think Byron knows where I mean.
That's why you need to reclaim it and start over again, yeah.
So, you know, to get through the winter is going to be, going to be a problem. I don't know how that'll work out if you can't get back down to the gravel surface, but it's rough up through there now that I don't even travel. I go through there, well, I go down to Mill River and back twice a day, so it's four trips if I, that I go some way, and it's, I just can't justify putting my vehicle over that. Resolution for the long term, I think Byron hit on that earlier in his presentation. If they go, if we have to go to the legislature to get that change made up there in ownership, that that's the way to, that's the way to go, or a deed from the city. I don't know whether they're allowed to do that kind of thing or not, but a deed to include half of the road plus the right-of-way for maintenance would get future boards off the hook as to being in the dark on what to do. A deed would spell it out, and I think that's, for the long term, that's what we should be shooting for.
So, would the board be in favor of me reaching out to the city's intermunicipal committee and scheduling a meeting for us to discuss this topic? I just don't see, Jim, much happening, you know, now, but, you know, if we take the winter months and we negotiate some type of a deal with the city, you know, we'll be ready for paving season.
I agree, but I...
Or July 1st, when we have an inf...
I threw it out there to emphasize the seriousness of the problem.
Right.
And I don't think I'm exaggerating a bit, if anyone hasn't been up there, it's an eye-opener. And the thing that surprised me the most was that in my discussion with David Laer, he said that, he told me flat out, he said, "We're not spending any money up there."
So, here's the question, even if we did this 50-50 split, remember, we've already rebuilt the portion that we had, we already took really good care of it, and we have taken, and now, because the city hasn't taken care of the other part, we're going to be incurring more expense, and even if we took over a piece of this, what's the city's commitment for taking care of the rest of theirs, which is still, I'd like to know if it's even on their pavement schedule or on their rebuilding schedule, and if it's way down, if it's a very low priority, we're going to be in the same position, we're going to be taking over another piece, fixing it way up, and then being asked later on to take over yet some more.
If you want me to get into the nitty-gritty, I'll do that.
Well, I'm just saying that this is, we made a pretty good deal to the city, we were going to wrap it all into our pavement, give them a really good reduction in rate, and they didn't want to do it. So, there is a point at which we can't go around paving the city's roads. Yeah... the city's roads. Um, yeah, there are people in the town who live up there and, and in the city.
But JP had it right when he said, uh, you can't put taxpayer money in the people's or other municipality's property without some guarantee you're gonna get something in return.
Right.
And he was absolutely right. In the absence of the city, um, showing any interest in doing anything, even for the short term, um, there's a couple things I think you can do. You can get someone from AOT down to check their records and see where that state aid money has gone, uh, that, uh, is allocated for that section of Class Three Road up there. It obviously hasn't gone in, into that section. That would, uh, open up a can of worms, I'm sure. Um, the next thing, if nothing happens, would be, uh, turn Kevin Brown loose and, and, um, take him to court.
So I, I think there's a lot of things that we could do before we hit them between the eyes, uh, with attorneys and so on. And I, I still would like the board to accept my suggestion that I reach out to them and see if we can get a good conversation going and see how we can get this figured out. Because there's townspeople that are unhappy, there's city people that are unhappy. Ethically, who should pay for it, obviously, we need to work out. There's a lot of questions. But before we get our attorney involved, I'd like to see if we can handle this, one municipality to another.
I agree with that approach, but if, uh, to cover all the bases as far as options go, if, if you feel you're in a, in a situation where you, you need to, uh, exercise the ladder, I, I think you can, I think you could get AOT people involved without too much, uh, feather ruffling. But beyond that, probably not.
Who's on intermunicipal?
Myself and, uh, Joe Donardo.
Well, Joe's on trans, Highway Committee in the town as well.
Why don't you?
The other alternative is to toss it to Highway, but if you, I mean, it is the city's road.
Yeah.
So intermunicipal makes sense.
I think we'll, uh, call for an intermunicipal meeting, see who comes. Byron, you know, anyone from our board's involved, yeah, welcome. Byron, of course, and we'll see who wants to participate from the city and...
Yeah, I'd like to come to that.
See if we can have a good, uh, healthy discussion on this, so. Jim, thanks for putting it on the forefront.
I mean, if they do it at 10 o'clock on a, you know...
We'll, we'll, we'll schedule the meeting.
We'll see.
We'll schedule the meeting and invite them to come. And we'll make sure it works for all board members to be here, okay?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay.
I, I think that's, uh, the, the best way to get this thing kicked off and...
All right.
And see what kind of resistance you run into or, or roadblocks or whatever, and then make your decisions after that.
We'll get to work on it, Jim.
Thank you.
Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Glad to help.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks for your help with the seniors. So you've had, you've got one more event now or two this year?
Uh, we're working on the fire station program for December 10th.
Great.
And, uh, Randy Roberts is helping me again this year because there's a lot that comes in that...
Yes.
Last month or so.
Okay.
And, uh, we're coming up on that.
Good. That was a great event last year, so.
It would, well, we're, we're shooting for a similar program again.
Good.
With a school, uh, Mike just told me that the school band was, was all laid on and, uh, so we're getting, we're getting there.
Good, thank you.
And the caterer's been, uh, talked to, um, by me and also Randy, I believe, and , uh, they're, they're okay. The fire station folks, fire chief, assistant chief, um, had a discussion with them a couple, three weeks ago, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
We're good.
Thank you for your work.
So we have to, we're going to lose our quorum in about 15 minutes, so we have to, um, pick and choose what we're going to discuss from here on out. Uh, by show of hands of department heads, is there anyone who absolutely has to discuss something with the board tonight? Fire's good. Byron, good? Chief? Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, for the sake of budgeting purposes, we had two, uh, healthy budget, uh, meetings for fire and rec earlier. Um, I want to throw out a, a percentage and see if, uh, the board agrees or not, um, for the sake of budgeting. Uh, I would like to see us once again offer a, uh, three percent raise, uh, to our town employees.
Do we know what the, um, cost of living, the COLA is?
I don't, I do not know. Uh, the, the way I came up with the three percent is quite frankly, the last four, this will be the fourth year that we, uh, as far as I can recall, the fourth year that we stuck with that three percent number. It seems to be fair and balanced for our...
It seems like it.
Employees, so.
This place is.
Okay. Comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Sharon?
Yes.
Okay. So for the sake of, if you haven't met yet, for the sake of budgeting, pencil in three percent, okay? And then, um, we can save that for next meeting. Bill Sweet, did you have, uh, anything for us to discuss that we haven't already?
Nothing urgent, no.
What is this watershed agreement here from Andres?
Uh, that was his for our budget purposes, uh, for planning for next fiscal year.
Right, so this goes in budget.
Okay. You'll hold on to that for us, Bill?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Kirsten, anything for the board?
Um, I need a finance committee meeting, other than that, I'm done.
Okay. How soon do you need that?
Um, Andrew would like you all to get on it. So we'll see who's better.
Okay. Barbara's not here. Yeah, JP's not here. We've covered A, B, C, D, E. Number three, Columbus Drive, we can hold on to for next time, Byron? Columbus Drive, we can hold on to for next time?
Sure.
Okay.
We should probably, that's Highway.
That should go through Highway Committee.
Should go through Highway anyway. And we've got to set up a, I tried earlier, but then, yeah, Joey got called away, so we're gonna have to set up a Highway Committee meeting and do these things and the budget.
Thirty-six calls, uh, for service from the PD, um, looks like. And then the state police covered 22 calls, so. Besides forgetting department head reports, uh, Mary and Sharon, I don't have anything else unless you did. I'd be comfortable if we adjourn at this time, or we could get in a department head report or two if you felt like you wanted to hear something.
Is there anybody that feels they...
I asked the question, so.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Motion by Sharon.
Second.
Seconded by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening, or good, uh, good night, everyone.